I'd like to call to order the CBU School Board meeting, meeting September 15th. We are starting at about 7:09. I'd like to call to order the meeting.
Geez, I missed one meeting and we get two new board members.
I know. And as I call this meeting to order, I'd like to welcome two new representatives on the Board. One is Lynn Janik, who took Marilyn Richardson's place, and we'd like to thank you for joining the Board. And our new junior representative from the Student Council, this is Jason Burgess. We welcome you, Jason. This is gonna be so much fun. And our new principal, Adam.
Check your name.
This is a beautiful name tag. I thank you for the welcoming gift. This is the best of Sharpie.
We want to see if you work out first.
So, we have done the first order to our agenda. Let's go on to Agenda Item Number Two, which is Adjustments to the Agenda. I might have an adjustment right here. Did anyone from this group attend the meeting in Montpelier today concerning the additional rep to?
No, because it was on the consent agenda. I'm fairly positive that had there been, if it had been pulled off the consent agenda, I would've gotten a notice, and I didn't.
Okay, does everyone understand? We normally have three representatives from CBU School Board to the CSSU School Board, but, oh, how many years ago? About four? Maybe?
Must've been three, I think it was two, because we had a two-year waiver.
There was a motion that we had an additional CBU member join the CSSU Board, and that expired, as Jean reminded me, this summer. It expired June 1st, and we had to repetition the Board of Education, the State Board of Education, to continue that, having that fourth member represent us on the CSSU Board. Does that make sense? And we are waiting for their answer. Okay, so. Audience and Communications, Item Number Three. You're just here for the fun of it?
No, I just thank you through the Board for your service. I love my school, I greatly admire all members.
Okay, right. So, moving on, Item Number Four. We have no presentations to the Board tonight, I'm assuming that is correct. And so, we're moving on to Number Five. Item Number Five, Reports to the Board. First one, Adam, you're up. Your first principal report.
All right. Hopefully, it's a good one. First, I just want to, I think you've all received the report, I would imagine, and I want to just highlight that which is not always captured well in the written word, and that is my thanks for being here. Thank you for hiring me and returning me to this wonderful community. It has been, in all honesty, I've been driving to work with a big smile on my face every morning, and it was a real, it's just been a pleasure to be back and part of a system that is chock-full of wonderful people, amazing teachers, particularly my ninth-grade English teacher.
He's a better teacher than he was a student.
Wonderful students, and it's, you, not saying that everything is perfect here, but it feels healthy, and that's hard to, sometimes it's hard to capture in metrics, but the emotion is right here. So, I also, what's not captured here is I spent a lot of time over the summer talking to individuals I met with, I'd say, a majority of the faculty and many of the staff in one-on-one meetings focused on three questions. Three questions were, what do you, what values do you cherish most at CBU, and what's your role in perpetuating those values? I guess that's two questions. But, the second set of question was, where do you see room for improvement, and what's been your role in either improving or not improving this place? And then, the third one was, how can I help you as a principal? What can I do to help grow CBU? And the number of responses, I'll just share some of them with you. I've been capturing them in a faculty know, understand, and do, but to hear the individuals speak to things like, "All students have a strength and genius, and it's our job to find those strengths and geniuses." The first step in teaching a student is knowing a student as a person and as a learner. To try is to fail. All students have strength that once identified can be used to augment all areas of that student's life. Students thrive when the interlocking components of a system are healthy. A sense of purpose drives a student's experience. I mean, the list goes on and on. It's just wonderful. All students deserve a quality education. A sense of fun makes us more effective in the job, more enjoyable. Our different experiences may make us hesitant to take risks, but real growth happens when we open ourselves to new learning and new things. And I could go on, but it was just a real pleasure to come back and view this place with fresh eyes, and in some ways, oddly enough, learn about myself, both as a leader and as a learner, knowing that many of my values came from this place. So, it's hard to capture all that in a principal report, but I did want to draw attention to it. And just running through the report, a couple of things to note. You'll see in the beginning, under School Openings, Relationship Culture and Tone, probably important to note that we went back to a house model this year. Last year, our support structure was broken into a ninth and 10th grade and 11th and 12th grade system, so that one house director was focused on the lower house and one on the upper house. I think the, again, coming back to our values, the idea that we cherish relationships, that we build relationships with our students, with our families, we decided to go back to more of a house model. Again, we only have two house directors, so we have one house director who is supporting Chittinen and Fairbanks, and one who is supporting Nichols and Snelling.
But, there's no change to what the students, I mean, the students have always been in the house, right? We just changed administration.
Students have always been in a house, but last year, depending on what situation may have arisen, it may have, the house director with whom they were interacting may have changed, the House Office Administrative Assistant may have changed, and that just, it got confusing, I think, for students. So, and thus far, my sense is that it's going well, and that it was, it's a natural to return to that type of a model. I did have some hesitancy, again, returning, remembering what my life was like as a house director, wondering how one person could do two houses, and thus far, it seems manageable, but this is gonna be, we're gonna be gathering as much evidence as we can as we progress through this year. So, we need to give it some more time before we really decide. One of the other things to call attention to, and the third bullet down, our pre-service, we focused on developmental trauma, and had a, just a, again, maybe a little biased, but I think a fantastic experience with David Melnick, who's the Director of NFI, and it was, I got many responses from faculty that said it was the best professional development they had received.
We have to tell them what developmental trauma is and what NFI is.
Sure. Right. NFI is the Northeastern Family Institute, and developmental trauma is, the focus is on what happens to young people, very young people, ages zero to five, when they have, when they go through extreme abuse, neglect. Basically, it's a stress that the body can't cope with, and because the brain is developing at such a rapid pace, at zero to five, there are lifelong impacts on the brain and on the functioning of students much later in life, when they experience that type of neglect and trauma. And it's just, I think it's eye-opening, there are some really powerful strategies. Also, a reminder that, you know, that trauma affects all of us, whether folks we're related to, whether we've experienced it, and just because we think someone may be functioning perfectly well, there may be much more going on, so.
Leading research is all about that. The medical profession, the, working with developmental issues in schools and the Department of Corrections, they're using that to identify a lot of problems that there were no reasons for before, that were easy to identify. It's interesting work.
Yeah, and the body-based health issues that are associated with that type of trauma that I think before we would've treated just the symptoms instead of looking deeper and looking at a systemic issue. That's, it's, I had one faculty member say, "I wish I'd had this training, and all teachers should have this training before they enter the profession." So, we will, we'll find ways to continue that. Painful work. It's an odd way to start a year, in some ways, like, "Hey, everybody, new principal, let's talk about abuse and neglect." So, going down through the list, you'll see our new faculty members and where they came from. See some familiar names, maybe. Jeff Tobrok, returning to us. One familiar name at least. Amy Bellrose, who was a student teacher last year and also worked with me in Montpelier, so it's fun to meet with her again. Teacher, something to be doing. Very, very well. On the next page, the second-to-last bullet, we had a first-day assembly, whole-school breakfast kickoff to the year, and the idea of the leadership team was that it's hard to take responsibility for a community and for the person next to you if you can't see them, and in the past, we had just, I think we tended to start the year either by class and, just to get everyone together, to eat together, was a nice way to start, and I think we'll try to find some ways to include parents next year, maybe even have some.
It was an amazing event.
But, didn't you pick everyone?
In the gym. In the gym. Yeah.
Not easily.
Standing room only for adults.
So, I don't know how many more parents we could squeeze in there, but.
I don't know, but it was really an amazing event.
I was giving my first speech, and then I looked up and saw Lain in the corner, and I wasn't nervous in front of 30 other people, so I was pretty lucky.
I wasn't hiding well enough.
That was a lot of fun. We, and we sat by advisory, and it was just a nice way to kick the year off. And then, September 22nd is gonna mark our first school-wide recess, and I actually have a little video clip prepared, if you're interested in learning more about that. It's about two and a half, three minutes. Want to see it?
Hope so.
What's that?
How frequently will you be doing the recesses?
It's a great question. What do you think?
I remember what you were doing in Montpelier.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I think it depends, I mean, we, it's, again, in a smaller school, it's a little bit easier. I think we can pull it off, but.
I mean, I hate to be the Grinch, but it kind of depends on what's, it's taking place of, for me, you know? That's, I think we need some structural discussions.
Math and science change.
Yeah, let's just skip math and science.
Well, I mean, if you're a believer in, I mean, when I hear you say that, what I hear you saying is, "It's better not sacrifice learning," and my response would be, "The only reason to do it is for the sake of life."
I knew that'd be your answer, but.
It's also pretty research-based.
That's right.
Someone must be against recess, but.
We'll go year-long school, then you can have recess.
You're right. Hey, by the way, while you're waiting, I did get confirmation that the State Board had approved the consent agenda, the.
Oh, terrific.
Oh, thank you.
Great. Excellent.
You guys have promised not to make fun of me for my leadership evaluation here. Sean used to do it. We're here now, made by Sean, and I immediately apologized to him about three months into my first principalship.
Eighty-five minute classes are a long time for most kids, so having that little break in there in the afternoon has really helped our kids re-energize, and teachers as well. MHS Unplugged is recessed, but we wanted to give it a theme name so that the idea of unplugging yourself from the curriculum, unplugging yourself from stress, unplugging yourself from electronics, just becomes the main focus of the 15 minutes per day that we offer, MHS Unplugged. Students and faculty come up with activities that they would like to offer during that time.
Recess is kind of interesting for our high school. Just nicely relaxing between your classes and kind of get out some of your tiredness. There's art stuff, and playing board games.
Three, two, one.
We really make that point to say you have permission, and we need to stop what you're doing, do something totally different, something that's mindful, challenging, something that creates community, something that creates generosity. Sometimes, by doing an activity for that kid that is having a tough time in your class, there's a connection that's made, it's very powerful.
Nice, that's better. Now, you're first in that class.
C, C. It's a good time to just mellow out and just clear your head from the school where you're at. Other times, I'll go to the gym and play basketball, or I'll go outside and play lacrosse, or meditate.
All right, you all ready?
Yeah. Be quiet.
Lie in the posture of Shavasana. Take three full deep breaths, and with the exhalation, feel a sense of letting the, the whole face is becoming dissolved, feel the shoulders sinking into the floor. There's this community happening, and relationships are fostered because folks who normally don't see each other all day get together for 15 minutes.
You may have recognized Bill Leidlaw there, who worked in Williston for some time. Who's the one that was talking? Thought everyone might be asleep in the night.
So, it's recess once a week, once a day?
In Montpelier, we did it four of the five school days a week.
Okay.
It came in between third block and fourth block. What we found was, we had, at Montpelier, we had advisory after first block going into second block, and then, many times, students would have a lunch break between second and third, between third and fourth, because that was, it was a nice time to re-energize. We have, we have one teacher there named Mary Redmond, who had been teaching for 46 years, she's retired. I think many people, I'm sure Cindy knows her. I mean, just an amazing educator, and she came to me after the first week of recess and said, "This is the first time that in fourth block, my," I don't know why, she isolated males, "but my males are more focused in class." So, it was. It's something to try here and see what happens.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, and I don't come across as, it's a bad idea, it's just, I would like to see, I'm not an educational professional, I would like to see that it's research-based, I would like to see what it's, how it's fitting into the day, because it says 15 minutes, but all know with 10 minutes of transition on either side, it could be a half an hour of the school day, and that's a lot of time. You're doing something different without having thought about it.
It was more like 20. It was more accurate. Let's see, so you'll see the next bullet down around professional development and clarifying the vision. So, we're gonna be spending some time this fall to get very concrete about what standards-based learning means in the lives of our students, what it looks like to have a standards-based system. I was gonna try to stop myself from talking about this, but one major concern, and in fact, I would call it a disappointment, has been the recognition of the lack of flexible pathways at CBU. We just, as a school and a district with our resources and of our size, we have no excuse not to have an interest-based flexible pathway for students. I thought I was gonna be more comfortable with that this year, but in the past week and a half, I have, week and a half to two weeks, I've met with 12 to 13 students who are either pursuing part-time education here, or who are graduating early for college. And my sense in talking with those students was that they weren't quite ready to leave the emotional nest that is a high school, but were in a place where they were feeling stifled enough that, that they wanted something else. So, I described some of the work around flexible pathways that I've seen at South Burlington High School, that's at Montpelier High School, U 32, Mount Abe. You name a school in the state, and you'll see more robust, interest-based flexible pathways than what we have. And I described what a program could look like, and many of them were very, very intrigued. So, I'm, in the next month, putting together a research team on that for here. I will tell you that I had the benefit, when I got to Montpelier, of having a $40,000 grant that the state awarded the school for our flexible pathways team, so we went to almost every school in the state, beyond the state, and researched flexible pathways. We had time to do the actual professional research. So, I have the benefit of that experience, and also creating flexible pathway at Montpelier, seeing the results of what can happen. Many of the faculty and staff here are believers. I sent an email, I sent out an email that had a subject line, "Impulsive but Honest Email," and talked about flexible pathways, and I had 40 responses from faculty members who wanted to be on that team. So, the beliefs are there. I think, I don't exactly know what's gotten in the way of us developing more pathways here, particularly around an interdisciplinary, interest-based pathway, but it's something that can be done relatively easily, does not necessarily need to be a large amount of FTE, and would be powerful for a lot of our students. So, my hope is to get a presentation together to the Board as quickly as I can. I just, not because of my own personal beliefs, more because I'm seeing the students asking for it, so.
I have a question. What would flexible pathways look like?
That's a great question. It's almost like you're a plant. Funny you ask. It can, it can look, it can vary in appearance from place to place. I printed up, ours was at Montpelier, somewhere around here. So, I can talk about Montpelier's, which was based off the Big Picture Program in South Burlington and the pilot program at U 32. Basically, the idea is that we have a set of graduation standards that we are, we want to guarantee that all of our students are powerful in, and you've probably seen those. They were, when I was here last, they were called the ESLs, there were 15 of them, which broke down into about 20 different subcategories, which became somewhat unmanageable. And my sense is, well, I know, those have been pared down to, between, I mean, the state recommends between five and eight graduation standards, I believe CBU is at seven right now. So, you have these standards, and basically, the idea is that if we're real, that we want to guarantee this, that our students are powerful in these seven typically transferable skills that go across content and across discipline. There's nothing that says that we can't allow a student to pursue a particular interest in getting to those, to those graduation standards. So, in Montpelier, what we did was, we developed what we called the SOAR program, and the idea was that there was a SOAR seminar, so that students would have a cohort, they would come to school and meet in their cohort for two hours a day, or every other day. Then, there were internships, so a student would identify an interest and pursue rigorously an internship beyond school. So, that would range anywhere between 12 and 20 hours a week. And then, we would encourage students, not encourage, students had to develop project-based learning, both in the STEM STEAM area and in the humanities area, and when done right, all of those things would be dovetailed together. So, for instance, I don't know if this is the best example, but for some reason, we had a girl who was fascinated in cycles in the world, and so, her study for that, for, I believe she only did it for a semester, but her study was around the narrative cycle of human life and film. So, she was interviewing both young and old and trying to capture a narrative cycle, and she was also fascinated by natural cycles, particularly, she was focused on decomposition. And she got an internship at the, what's that, that rest area in Randolph where you go, you go to the bathroom, and then it's recycled? I don't know. But she, she then captured all of her work in a portfolio, and she also took one or two classes along with that. So, she had, we didn't completely break away from credits, because we wanted students to be able to interface back in if the program didn't work, but basically, her six credits that semester were focused on that self-organized, rigorous study with regular learning exhibitions, as we called them. So, that's, I mean, that's one way to go about it. Other places, other places do it differently, but I think it's a step before college, and it really forces students to be self, self-organized, self, I mean, most students found it to be much more difficult than coming to classes and going through hoops, so.
Well, we look forward to you doing your presentation on that in the future.
I think I just did it. Yeah, so, we'll, I will present to them. This is probably the longest principal report ever, huh?
I'll give you one more minute.
Okay.
Kathy has a question, though. Kathy has a question.
What's the participation rate in Montpelier percentage?
Yeah, it's, what motivated me when I first got there was that I recognized that 10% of our graduating class was graduating through the Adult Basic Ed Program and Act 176, as we called it at that time. In Montpelier, that's roughly nine to 10 kids. Oddly enough, that became our first year, we had 10 students who were in it, so, which was a manageable number to start. But, it's a lot of work for the teachers and students.
This is for students usually, just before they go off to college?
No, well, in the first year, we had, it was juniors, actually, who were more attracted to it, and then those juniors went off and are now in college, and, you know, there are many concerns about what is this, what will this be in the college application process? I think it's a benefit, actually. I think it makes you stand out in some ways that colleges might be interested in.
I think South Burlington High School has 35 in Big Picture, and they can start in ninth grade.
Is that about 10%?
Real fast question.
It's about 850 students in this school.
I'm looking at the enrollment by, CBU by the numbers.
Yep.
Receiving services only off-campus, I don't, I never saw that category before.
Do you want to see some clearer numbers? I don't know if we have time for that.
I'll give you a minute.
One minute.
Well, this, these are normally special-end kids, I think.
I figured the more I talked, the fewer questions.
Usually with emotional behavior. Garvin? Belkate? Belkate, Belkate School and Garvin School, they're both small, private, or not private, but self-contained. Are they considered, they're considered, they're not really private schools.
Garvin?
Public school, funded?
I think they're a little bit more independent.
We pay tuition to all of them, they're independent.
Okay, independent, yeah.
So, I think the, I'll just, because I only have a minute, I'll just go to the, you know, I think the slide that probably you noticed most, and that's the variance of students from last year to this year.
Ouch.
Yeah.
And here are our projections. I know we're, I think we're getting new projections in December, is what I heard.
What comes in December is the calculation of equalized students.
I forget what they do.
We also get the MeZDEC student.
Forecast.
And that's October, is it October 15?
Some, whenever, yeah, whenever they give the choice.
So, I promise I didn't do it over the summer, I don't know what happened. It looks like a larger and smaller freshman and senior class.
Well, we can hardly hold you responsible for the senior class.
Although, I did try to take credit for our 38 ranking. It was like, two weeks later, after I got here, that ranking, so I figured.
I got a couple emails. People noticed that.
The ranking.
The ranking, yeah.
Yes, not from here.
It was a big deal.
I just, I just wanted to say, I get your email weekly now, as a parent and as a board member, and I love looking at the pictures and seeing what the kids are doing, in particular, the young gentleman who was in your office, and it's so good to see something that's a little bit different, and to recognize someone who might not normally have gotten recognized, is my impression. I love that. Yeah, that's great. That's great, yeah.
Yeah, you made these little things.
Yeah.
I also, I like it because my wife loves it.
So, you're a better board member for.
He took credit for that.
So, Adam, can I ask a question on the exchange students' wide so this year?
They host families, they were having troubles getting host families, because I know Jan, he called us and said, "Not yet this year."
We also didn't have that many requests. I mean, we allowed, I know we went beyond the two groups that we normally work with, and they're gonna escape my mind right now, and accepted another student, but I think, I think some years, you have more requests than others.
Eight to 10 usually.
Yeah, I think up to 10.
Does anyone have any more questions for Adam on the principal's report?
Get yours.
Thank you for that thorough.
So, I have to learn, I have to.
I think it's great. I think it's great. We gave you some latitude.
All right. What am I supposed to learn with that, too, by the way, like 10 minutes, or look at the agenda, maybe?
You're supposed to expect people to have read, and then you're supposed to say, "Anybody have any questions?" I like a couple of.
And then no one has a question, and then move on.
Just kidding.
We're going to move on to five point two, the CSU debrief. I think we're just specifically looking at the open meeting law.
Well, that's just, I think, a reminder to cover that.
To cover that. There is a copy that Cindy gave us about the rules of the open meeting law, you'll see that right here. Basically, what I got away from this is every, any meeting you hold, whether it's a committee meeting, an ad hoc meeting, you know, let's say you're, if you're on a, it doesn't cover the communications plan, does it? It should? It has to be warned. And the question I have for you is who do you tell to warn that meeting?
If you notify Sandy of the schedule, she will do the warnings.
Okay, and, okay.
That would be on the regular special and emergency. Just notify Sandy.
Well, you would probably only be scheduling a committee meeting, right?
Committee will always be special.
Yes, yes, committees and ad hoc committees are special, and emergencies, we rarely have those. And the other thing that is, was really brought to our attention is when we write emails to each other, if you ever read the bottom of my, my email, it says, do not reply to all, because you're not supposed to be doing any type of board business discussion via email.
Make sure nothing's going to the private server.
Right. Especially if you're Secretary of State. You can do things by, I mean, on the back, there are things that you can do, we do lots of work by email, you can, but I like the very bottom where it says, you know, never communicate anything using email that you would not share in open meeting, I think that's really good.
The other thing that, I don't know if people, some people had the opportunity to just view the common topic tonight about governance, it was very good by Nicole Mace, she's the, is she the president?
Executive Director.
Executive Director of the Vermont School Board Association, and this all centers around Act?
Forty-six.
Forty-six.
Did you have that here?
Yep, and we will be discussing that a little bit later, so go from there. Fourth quarter financial management report, five point three, that is also in your packet. The finance committee met with, finance facilities committee met with Bob, and.
Let me do it?
Yep. Go ahead, Jean, you're number lady.
So quarter to quarter, we have a much improved financial position, it got a hundred and eighty thousand dollars better from the third quarter forecast to the fourth quarter forecast. IT was much better, athletics, some instructional improvement, and those were pretty much spelled out in the report. What I do want to point out specifically is food service, because in the third quarter, the only reason that we got worse was the food service forecast was going, forecasting for the first time ever to be losing money at thirty-eight thousand dollars. And Leo's turned that around to, it's only a deficit of thirteen. So that was a good work by him to change that around. It does, this good news leaves us with the fund ballots of, of almost six hundred thousand dollars, which is great, so, because we're going to, we start talking about the budget and the caps that we've been given, you know, it's going to be, it's going to be tough to get underneath the numbers that we're expected to get under, applying the fund balance is one tool that we have to, to meet those numbers.
Jean.
Yeah.
On that fund balance page, there's two different lines there, one above the double line, one below the double line.
Yep.
And I have no idea what's going on there.
I only focused on the bottom one, they're both correct, they're just different.
Well, I'm sure they are, I just have no idea what they meant.
Well, the first one is, so that, so you see the, this is fifteen, the fund balance and what we, these, the two pieces that we applied, so it doesn't take into account the surplus, the top number. The top, the top one where it says fund bal, added fund balance, less reserved, less revert, reserved, I don't think it takes into account the fund balance. I don't know, actually, I didn't look at that close because I didn't, don't usually use that calculator.
Are you asking what the reserve numbers mean? That's the numbers you've applied towards the budget.
No, he was just asking what the two seventy-nine number means, and I'm just saying that I don't.
I believe that's your undesigned, you haven't allocated it to the next year's budget, and you have, so it's still sitting in your surplus account, so to speak.
But we also, that's what the net is, that's why it's confusing, so the, the net number is the six hundred thousand. I'm not sure why Bob did it that way, I'll, I'll ask him. But fact is, we're in very good shape going into budget for that thing there. We did talk a little bit about what we could take from finishing last year into the budget process, and, you know, IT and instructional, instructional, I think in this case is where, Polly, you're in the meeting too, you can help me, but I think it had to do with, with, we've set aside professional development funds per contract, but if it doesn't get used, it shows up here. So, so IT and instructional may be some areas where if we get tight, we could perhaps lean in a little bit on the budget. We still have to have it in the budget, but maybe we, you know, because by contract, we have to have that money available for teachers, but maybe that's a place we could know is going to be a little high. The other thing, food service, I am still worried about food service because the, one of the reasons that the number got much better is that we had, we didn't actually have the entire number of school days that we had budgeted for because of snow days, because we waived a couple of snow days at the end of the year. Cafeteria workers are hourly, so they had, I forget the number of student days we had, but we had two less student days, and so, so if we have all, so if that doesn't, you know, that. If it doesn't snow. If it doesn't snow, you can be in good shape, and also you can plan on it, you know.
Actually, what we discovered when we plugged away at that number a little bit is there's two weeks, exam weeks, where often some of the staff are not working.
Oh, so that is, could be reasonable.
And so the encumbrance shows everyone working, but Leo's allowing them not to work as long as he has what he needs to cover. So we're working on trying to figure out the right metric so that we have the appropriate encumbrance, so that his numbers don't shift so much between third and fourth.
Okay, well, that would be a, that would be a good thing, because that is forecastable, right? The other one isn't forecastable, the snow days that we waive, you know.
You know what, Polly, I, I just need to be reminded how our food service had been so.
Making it profitable.
Doing profitable, and they were paying for equipment and this and that, and then this switch. I don't think the culture of our, of our high school has changed, I don't know, Andre, you're, you're the longest, Cindy, yeah. Two, there's two things, cost of food has changed a lot. The other are the new federal regulations, he can't do the à la carte sales that he used to do, so the foods that. That's right. Might have had either a better profit margin or more student interest, aren't they? I knew I needed to be reminded, yes.
This is true statewide, Montpelier.
Nationwide, nationwide.
I know we mentioned it last year in passing, but is there, when do we, or when can we discuss bypassing those limitations in selling what will, will be purchased?
So we did have that conversation.
Yeah, we did. Leo has been going back and forth, if he, if we opt out of the program, we lose our commodities, which are, you know, surplus foods we get from the federal government, you know, it could be cheese, it could be lunch meats, and in turn, then, you are going to have to go out and purchase that food, but at what cost? So he keeps going back and forth, I don't know if Leo has said anything to you about, you know, I mean, we can go back and revisit it, but.
It affects our free and reduced lunch subsidy, doesn't it? We wouldn't get one.
Well, all the money that we would lose, I think the last I heard, he, Leo was kind of settled on, it's, he couldn't make it up, it's a big number. And, and you know, frankly, it's, it would be a hard sell, someone would have to convince me that, that that's a better thing, we're not just making money by selling junk food to kids, but that he's got a better solution, and that would be a lot of work to sell to the community, so.
Never junk, not saying junk.
No, absolutely, but you know what, unfortunately, you know, you'd have to make that case to the community. So last I've heard, unless it's changed, he's decided that he couldn't make up the eighty thousand dollars or something that he would have to make. Also, is there more food going into the garbage because it's packaged with like the fruits and the vegetables that the kids don't want and they toss them? I've heard that's happening nationally. Have you seen?
The K eight food service directors will tell you that, that they watch that happen. I haven't heard that from Leo, but that doesn't mean it's not.
Yeah, this is, it's, the, the way that we do the lunches here, yeah, everything is composted, I mean, it's.
At least it's getting composted.
You get in trouble here if it's not. Yelled at for having a plastic water bottle recently.
Good.
Yeah, I know. But no, I don't, we don't have that issue, because kids can pick and choose, and it's more of the issue, Kay, when you get the full hot, hot lunch.
So finally, the last thing is the construction fund, we're, and we ended the year with a three hundred and forty thousand dollar balance, which includes the money that we've earmarked for field improvements at a hundred and twenty. The reason it's so high is that we tried to work with Kurt to try to get some work done on the parking lot, which was going to be expensive, and some, if you remember, there was a field solution that would cost about, we used, we used to keep referring it to about seventy-five thousand dollars, it was a way, not the full renovation, but a partial, you know, drainage solution, and we had really hoped to get that in the summer, and that didn't happen either. So that, so we've got a pretty high balance, those are still in the works to happen, just couldn't get them.
Yeah, they're going to be done next year.
It was such a big deal, my question when I heard you say this, why didn't it happen? I know it was rainy as June.
There was engineering issues, I believe.
Whatever, I mean, I'm just sort of, I'm surprised, and I was looking forward to at least.
The field was very disappointing, because we kind of hoped to see, have one in place so we could see if it was going to be a good solution.
Right, you know, we talked about this for about ten years.
And there's, there's more issues with the parking lot, I think, than, than they thought there would be, and they really need to do a full examination of the parking lot, drainage, the leveling, and all that kind of stuff, so it may cost us a little bit more next year, we'll see.
We'll see.
So is the field project under contract?
No. And it won't happen, he will try and get that all ready by this early spring, late winter, early spring, so that as soon as the fields are available during the summer to, to do that drainage on one of the fields, then we'll, we'll be going.
Does he promise? I'm sorry.
That's it. Any other questions on the financial management report? And because the facilities slash finance committee met, that was our report, so do we have any other committee reports?
I have to say that Jeff was one fine budget manager, wasn't he?
I don't think so, everybody has our communications plan, we send that out to everybody, right? So, yeah.
Sure can be.
Ask one question on the whole food situation, right? Since it's so integral to student health and, you know, the population, is that a topic we should bring back into here, have Leo discuss to your point? I mean, I understand the numbers, but there's just a whole point of, do you want your kids leaving campus to go get food? And I know they do it.
Well, they're allowed to. They're allowed to.
I know. So what's the whole point of it?
We, we have a whole wellness thing, if we should choose to do that, that is a piece of it, that would be.
We can certainly invite Leo, if that's an interest in the board.
Maybe we could, since we're talking about the work plan today, maybe we could talk about it on the work plan, I guess we would just need to kind of flesh out what really we want him to address.
At one point, I was on the committee, the finance committee, but then emerged with the facilities committee, and I, and I don't get any meeting notices, so I, I, it's okay with me if I'm not on that committee, but if I am, I'd like to know.
I, I, I don't think you were.
No, we're.
I'll, I'll go back and look at my notes, but, or I'll look at the minutes from when we formed the committees, when we reorganized the boards. Now I'll let you know.
Yeah. Nice to know what committee.
So I don't think we have any other committee reports, we go on to the student council report, Lucy and Jason.
Great, so we're just getting back into the swing of things here at school, I feel like we've just started, but it's actually like four-ish weeks now, coming up on that. Student council has been busy planning Rally in the Valley, which is taking place this Friday at six, so that's where all the, well, most of the sports teams who choose to participate, they all choreograph dances, and it's really a fun spirit night to really kick off the spirit day on Saturday, which is where we have all the, well, most home games happening. So we have girls and boys soccer games at ten, twelve here at CBU, as well as a football game at one, and field hockey at two thirty. So hopefully, student council is going to try to boost morale as much as possible Friday night, so that we have a great turnout for those Saturday games. Yes, so that's what student council has been up to in the school community, Jason.
And coming up on the first week of October, we have the Club Fair, which is a week-long, and if you're familiar with it, it's where all the clubs get together and present their, their clubs to the CBU students. And I think, I've been to People's Academy, which is in Morrisville, and they didn't have a whole lot of clubs, and the first thing I noticed when I came to CBU was the amount of clubs, and I've joined so many, I love it. So I think that's a really, really important week, and so we're trying to optimize student involvement in that. So our initiative for the year that Bill has presented to us is that we're going to try and increase student communication with student council to make sure that the student's voice is represented and heard. So that's our big overarching theme for the year. And one of the ways we're going to do that is we're trying to get students to work within their friend groups at lunch to discuss the things that come up at student council meetings. So instead of us getting together and making all decisions, we're going to go to them during lunch and just casually bring it up and say, you know, student council is talking about this, what do you guys think? So that's one way we're working on improving communications. That's all.
I have a question, where are you with the senior privilege?
That's a, that's a good question. There is some confusion as to whether a student council is taking charge of that or a senior class. I know that there is one student working towards that right now, but I will check in and I can get, it will probably be brought, hopefully it'll be brought up at the October meeting.
Lucy, I can speak to that.
Okay.
I met with a group from the senior class last week, five students who are, who grabbed the forms, what happened after that, I'm not sure, but we, we talked about some of the things that they might want to think about in terms of when they're talking with the senior class, and also I gave the October board a potential time for them to.
Yeah. And just one other thing is, you didn't, you have CBU at a glance coming up next week, don't you?
We do, yes. One other quick note I just put in also on the Spirit Day celebrations, that we're hoping to dedicate the spirit of it to Kevin Reel, and not, not in sadness, but in what Kevin really stood for, and that was a great sense of life and celebration, so we'll be, we'll be making a note of that and just putting out, the senior class last year, we've dedicated a bench to be under the flagpoles on the, one of the fields where you can sort of see everything that's happening on campus, and we'll have some pictures of him there, and also just the Kevin Reel fund, so. Not, nothing sad, you would have hated that, just something simple and, and happy and fun, so.
Do you have anything else from the student council report to add?
That's it. I should mention that Lucy did an outstanding job talking at the, to all the CSU teachers at the convocation, she did a great job, I was very impressed, I was more nervous than you were up there, so, no, I was pretty nervous. Didn't show.
Okay, let's move on to six point oh discussion matters, and with that, we'll do policy, which is six point one, there were five policies that we reviewed, and does anyone have any comment, because this is the time, if you have any comment on any of the policies? Any changes? I do have one question, Cindy, when I was reading the alcohol testing, I thought I read that, yes, it's, no transportation employees shall use alcohol within four hours prior to performing safety-sensitive functions? Four hours? Can we change it to like twelve or something? I'm not sure I'm comfortable with the four hour.
Well, they also can't have a blood alcohol level, right?
Right.
So.
This is based on federal legislation, I can certainly check to see if we can make it larger, if, if the board wants me to do that, or actually, Ray will make sure he brings that to the policy committee.
I, I mean, if it's federal policy, I'm just like, four hours, okay? It depends, like, how many drinks did they have to have up until?
But it is the blood alcohol level.
But it is the blood alcohol level, so.
That's true.
And they're all randomly test, tested every quarter. Luckily, we've had a very good history.
I just had two, and they're kind of nitpicky, I guess, um, on the alcohol and drug free workplace under employee responsibilities. Says terminated at the discretion of the board that hired the employee. I think it would get complicated with our special ed folks who were probably hired by a local board, but now it's CSSU.
Yeah, we noticed that after the policy committee meeting.
Oh, sure. Anything I say, you're going to say, we know already.
Always.
I can read your mind, Jean. I can read your mind.
Uh, yes, thank you for pointing that out, Brian.
You're welcome.
I don't know if that dovetails up with the definition of employee either, that they may be indirectly employed.
What do you mean?
Well, employee means compensated directly or indirectly. So they may be an independent contractor that this board cannot do anything about.
Right, so the place it would most likely play out is in Charlotte.
Right.
Um, if you had a Vetcha driver, for example, or for our homeless students, we're not using taxis right now, we have a taxi driver, yeah, so.
But Jean's problem is that we, the question is, we didn't hire them. So they're being disciplined by a board that hired them. We didn't hire them.
And can't test them either. I don't know how you would test an indirect employee. That would be awfully hard.
Do you? You must. Or do they?
But while all of the testing regulations also apply to those transportation people as well, so Vetcha Falls has their own testing requirements. I don't know what the taxi driving requirements are, but we moved away from them.
Let's see, um, on the administrative responsibilities, this right above the table where they have like a biennial review of the drug prevention programs. Who does that for us?
Where are you?
Um, superintendent, right above the table.
Um, it usually comes through CY. Um, that's traditionally where, what we've used to access that. Um, it used to come through the ACT. Fifty-six training that all the teachers also were required to have.
Fifty-four.
Thank you, at fifty-four training. Um, however, um, the agency of ed has stopped enforcing that piece and has it tied to licensure, so we've had no hook to make them do that, so we rely heavily on CY still and our SAP counselors. But there's no specific program that I could point to.
So is this mandatory, this biennial review?
Well, if it's in the policy, one would argue that it's mandatory.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is why, why isn't it in the policy? I'll let, I'll just leave that as a, as a dangling question for the policy committee.
That's why we bring it here, so that we can.
Anyone have any other comments on any of the policies that we reviewed? Okay. Go ahead, Lauren.
This is actually for a policy that's in our consent agenda, F forty-one, but it's, you see the, see another policy. Who is our equity coordinator?
Me. Well, I take that back. Depends on the building, but at the end of the day, it's me.
But.
The house director.
It says we definitely need to designate somebody.
We do, and they're, they're listed in the procedures.
Okay.
And they're in the handbooks and all that. And here it's all of your administrators are equity coordinators or designated employees. They use the terminology interchangeably, so.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out that there's designated.
Kathy, you have some?
State law uses designated employees, federal law uses equity coordinators.
Just to follow up to Jean's biennial review, when was the last review of?
That's the date the policy was last adopted and reviewed. That doesn't necessarily mean that's the last time the superintendent did a review of the drug prevention program.
I know, who's asking?
I know, I'd have to find out.
I have a comment on title four, part A, second page. Programs must meet the principles of effectiveness. Just a, a small nits, can we make EA and AE? Just put parents up top.
What policy have you got?
He's looking at.
Title four, part A.
So that's actually part of the background information to this policy. It's not actually part of the policy. This is, comes from the state of Vermont.
Okay.
I can let them know, though.
Are we finished on reviewing the policies? And any comments? Let's move.
I have a question for Cindy. You mentioned, uh, CY connecting youth.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I just had a question as to how that program is going.
Okay.
Is it going well? Is there large student involvement?
Um, it's going well with limited resources. The resources they had ten years ago have dwindled considerably. Christine Lloyd Newberry, though, would be a better person to reach out to, so if student council wanted her to come do a report or the board wanted her to come do a report, she'd be more than happy to do that.
Thank you.
And we'll see some of their work with dissemination of the youth risk behavior survey. The athletic leadership council, I think is the name of it, on the prevention committee here. So that's all, uh, some of it's indirect work of CY and done through our SAP, but that's all part of CY.
But as a student, if you are not that aware of it, or whatever, I serve as a board member on that. And, um, I think the meeting is in October. So think about it, and you can, you can reach me and give me any feedback from, from a student who is asking about it. I think that's important.
Yeah, will you? I get you. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Let's move on to six point two, X forty-six, the merger committee. About a month ago, I believe I sent out an email asking people from this board who wanted to be on the committee, only to find out like three hours later that how the committee is formed has very specific rules. And, um, the, the committee, the merger committee is formed from the K eight board, or they, it's appointed by the K eight board. However, the people who told me they were interested, you would not represent the CVU board. You would represent your district, and we have given the names to the people in your district. So tonight they are deciding they are merging, making that merger committee.
I feel like I should be in there, like, you know, passing out cookies or something.
So I have no idea what the outcome would be, but I apologize, apologize if I got everyone's hopes up like, oh, yes, I'm going to represent the CVU board. And it's not the way that.
It might be a good lesson as you look at merger.
And again, if you heard Nicole Mace's talk, she talked a lot about the governance and what we have coming up against us. And this is something that we will be talking about for the next six or eight months. Okay?
Do people have any questions? It was kind of a big group to, to ask. I mean, it's. Because they represent the towns, the, the representation has to be proportional, actually to the student body of, of this SU.
The towns decide, and it's pre-K eight. We really have to get that in our language because it, pre-K is, is essential, yeah, pre-K eight.
But that's the reason. I don't know why they, so they basically said, you know, the K eight, pre-K eight boards are the ones who would best represent that. So they're, they're appointing.
Is that consistent, though, with the town that would have a pre-K three twelve? So their board.
Well, they're already pre-K twelve. They may not even be doing a merger study because.
Some of the smaller school districts.
The, um, probably some of the, so, so just to, so you're kind of aware of it, some of the bigger questions that the committee will have to deal with right away is, is really a timeline. Do, do we want to try to make this decision as a community in time for the accelerated, you know, the accelerated merger, which has quite a few benefits. They've structured it to kind of get people to move along quickly. So that, that's a big part of it. There's some real financial things to think about, uh, like who owns the buildings and what shape are the buildings in, and do you want to take on the assets of a different community? Um, those, those kind of things. And, and to Nicole's point, those were all kind of the, the nuts and bolts. You know, how, how big's the board going to be? What's a, what's a, is there going to be like a, a school, uh, committee? A school committee, like a climate committee or something, that's some kind of a school committee that takes the place of a local board? So those are sort of all the nuts and bolts things that have to be, have some structure put around them before you can take it to the community for a vote. But before you even get to that point, you really have to decide, is this the, is this going to be the best thing for kids, for the education? And so there'll be some discussion around that, too. So it's, it will be a very interesting, it'll be a very interesting proposition set of work. But it's going to be an all-consuming, I think, amount of work for the next four months.
Yeah. I encourage anyone who's, uh, really interested in, watch the common topics that are going to be coming along and if they address this particular thing, or if the discussion is coming up at the CSSU level, to attend those meetings, so.
Can I just, this is a little bit outside of just our specific situation, but something that Nicole had said that didn't, it didn't even occur to me, and it came about, I think, when she was talking about if Act forty-six could be repealed. And Joan, I'm curious, was there any talk from those districts, like she talked about at the Northeast Kingdom, where there is so much that would have to be done, there's no way they would ever be able to meet the accelerated merger timeline? Was there any talk about the inequity of those districts versus the districts that are already so consolidated and could potentially realize the benefits of those tax savings, whereas the ones that aren't are really going to get slammed?
Yeah. Um, I think it would be up to those districts to give Agency of Education a proposal. There's some, there's some ways that they would be working hand in hand. With Nikki was the, the project manager's name, and, and they're aware of that, so, yeah.
So you say they might, they may bring something back to legislature for a, some kind of.
An exemption or a, or a timeline expansion or whatever. But, you know, property tax and the quality of education has been, I mean, people will read quotes and you think, oh, that was yesterday's paper. It was the eighteen hundreds. So the conversations about how to educate and how to pay are, you know, always on, on the plate. But, but that is important to realize. I mean, Chittenden South is, is, in my mind, this close to going, and others are, are like this. You know, some people have mountain ranges in between, and, and that wouldn't be best for kids. So it's.
Actually, I was thinking about South Burlington and Burlington. They're, they're not eligible at all. They're already.
They're already, yeah.
They're already single, single four. The, uh, when you think about the, the taxes, because Kathy, I thought you had a good question about, like, where is all this money coming from, from the incentives? Um, it is one pool, so the more people go, the more the base tax rate's going to go up. But if you don't merge, you don't get the ten cents off of whatever the tax rate is. There's really only two things that are going to, there are two things associated with this decision that's going to happen to the tax rate. The first one is that instead of having individual town tax rates, it'll be like a, you could think of it as a weighted average tax rate. So some, some towns are going to benefit from that, some are going to lose from that, right? So that'll be the other.
Uniform tax rate.
One, we don't know, one uniform cost per pupil, which translates into before, then you have the CLA kicks in, right? So it's not going to be exactly the same. So there, there's that piece, and then there's the.
Would the CLA be for all the towns?
Individual towns.
That would still be separate?
It's still separate.
Yep.
Interesting.
So there's, so you have this weighted average effect, and then you have the incentive effect. And those, those are the two things that are uniquely going to happen based on this decision. Outside of that, that's why you can't keep quote people numbers, because outside of that, you have the normal base tax rate changes, our cost per pupil changes, you know, something else changes at the state. There's all sorts of things going on. So you can't, but you just have to say the town's going to be affected by this weighted average thing, plus or minus, and the incentive.
Well, it was fascinating. She said there were already sixteen to seventeen districts looking at accelerating.
Right.
Which is a lot.
That's a lot.
But then you also looked at all the districts that were exempted.
Right, because.
Because of their exemptions. So it really comes down to, my real question to her was, then how many districts are really in play for the tax rate? Because of the exemptions.
It's not going to be easy for communities to move by July one.
I think we're struggling, and we're, we're ninety percent there, you know? Really, for us, it's a philosophical discussion, not a, um, not a bold discussion.
Okay, um, we're running a little bit late. I'd like to move on to the next one, six point three, budget buddies. Just be thinking of, who can ask to be your budget buddy?
Yes. Oh, no. Surely is. Um, Elaine and Bob asked that I pass on that you may want to consider inviting them to come now because in October you will start having discussions about facilities and stuff. So not that the budget buddies have to start the formal process, but they may want to attend the October meeting.
Okay.
Can you, do we have the schedule, the dates of those meetings?
Yes.
I can't remember.
They're in your package. They're in your package.
We're going to approve it in a minute.
Yeah, we're going to be approving it.
Thank you.
And just to let people know, my budget buddy, Vicky's coming back again.
Yay, Vicky.
Thank you so much.
She's been there like five years. So she's well familiar with your budget. And just another good reason to invite somebody new for being a budget buddy is sometimes you get them to be board members, too. So, okay, let's move on to our action matters, uh, seven point zero. Action matter seven point one, do I have a motion to approve the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen board work plan? Which can be found at page fifteen, sixty?
So moved.
Page fifteen.
Second.
Okay, all those.
Wait, 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 we discussed it.
Let's, let's have a discussion. Sorry.
Adam, I saw you were going to talk about security next month. Is that something you think is going to be, like, fleshed out or a work plan for security, or how you? Is that something we should have more than once on the agenda, or, I mean, on the work plan?
I mean, I think part of it depends on what the board would like to see in that report. So I'd be, I don't know, now is important to kind of talk about it or not, but.
Let's talk the work plan. Other people have been on the board for a while can fill in, but a couple of years ago, I think right after the shooting in Connecticut, it was a big issue around school safety and. How it was shot, so it was more than that long ago. You know, there was, there was a lot of, uh, questions from the community about, you know, should we have a security officer? Should we have cameras? Should we really have the metal detectors? I mean, it ran the whole gamut. I, I, I know that Sean did a survey, a parent's survey, and I don't think we ever got it, a feedback back from that side.
So were we going to substitute the PBL graduate slash graduation standards for security?
You could do it later. It doesn't have to be in October.
Okay.
You're thinking like a principals report kind of answer, right?
Yeah, I was thinking something, something a little quicker. I, I just knew that there was a need for it, and, uh, what I had heard primarily about was, what's the thinking on a school resource officer? And I, and I think probably more realistically, what, what about cameras at the entrances and exits? And, you know, what are the, what are the beliefs on that? Also, what are some of the costs?
And I don't know, I mean, it's kind of a community's values kind of question, too. So I don't know if we want to, rather than make the decision as a board, if we want to reach out to the community, I don't know how people feel about that, but.
And just to let people know, I know that Kurt, the facilities manager, is looking at installing cameras in the parking lot because we had some vandalism done to the facility in the early summer where windows were, were they shot out or just broken?
Shot out, yeah, with BB guns, but.
But, um, just, uh, I think he's getting a quote on that.
We haven't approved it.
We haven't approved, we, I, well, we would have to approve it, but he's, something that he's looking at.
I mean, I do have some personal experience again. Keep referencing Montgaleer, but while I was there, we went from, at the same time, from a school that didn't have cameras and locked doors. There, there had always been an SRO there. But it was, it was inter, I mean, it was, I came from this culture where I was like, oh, a school resource officer and cam, and locked doors, my god. You know, and actually it ended up being fine and useful to a certain extent, so.
I don't know what other people feel, but I, I do kind of feel like, you know, student council should be talking to. student council should be, we should have a community discussion around it.
It's not something you do lightly.
Right, right. So you wanna just, maybe it could just be a report next, and we could have a board discussion around where we want you to go with it?
Sure.
If that makes sense? I'm just on the board, you guys need to nod your heads and say something.
Do you wanna see the finances at that time, too? I mean, that's relative, that's fairly...
Personally, I wouldn't put that value on safety.
Do they wanna see a report from Adam about the...
I think it's important to understand what some of the concerns are, because security has a very broad definition. So, I mean, there's personal security, there's property security, and now, you know, we have technology and security there as well, like, reaching in, so...
I think we need the philosophical conversation before money. You know, money to me is, oh, yeah, this, it's, we're gonna do it, this is what it's costing. Do you buy this, or, and, and I, I think it's a really big philosophical conversation.
Do you guys think the student council would like to weigh in on that discussion?
Yeah, we haven't had a top, we had discussions about this last year with our climate committee. I'm not sure if they've met yet, but we can definitely bring that up in the next few weeks to come and report back on what student council thinks. Student council, I think we'd also be excited and willing to go out into the community and poll some people and see what the students think about security cameras and the rest of the proposed plan.
I think you'll work with Adam and have a joint...
Have your friends who are just talk about that.
Yeah, at lunchtime.
Maybe even isolating points of discussion before the next board meeting, I think that's what I'm hearing.
And what would be some of the security precautions that we might have?
Might come from what the students feel is a concern to them, you know, that might be where it starts at.
The ones that I've looked before are, you know, there's cameras outside the building, there's also cameras inside the building, which are a little more invasive of your privacy, right? There's SROs, like a resource officer.
Security badges, whether adults are wearing those or not.
I mean, I would hate to go as far as metal detectors, because I think that would just be, just walking into like a prison instead, but that's my opinion, right? It depends on how safe or not safe people feel. Lock the door.
So are we finished with our discussion on the Board Work Plan and ready to...
Well, I know you have to go home and have your birthday cake, Holly, but this is our whole...
Happy birthday.
There was one thing that we talked about at, during budget last time, and you'll have to remind me, because, you know, I come from a school board that loved to micromanage. So, but I'm pretty sure...
Really?
Yes. Pretty sure that, when we talked at budget time, there was some discussion like, yeah, maybe we need to look into that. And it came up because there was the decision packet on funding some assistant coaches. And the question came up, why do we fund some coach positions, some we don't? Is the, is it, you know, what are the parameters around it? And I, I'm pretty sure we left that as, maybe that's something we need to talk about, because, I don't know, we're funding it, but I could be wrong. Let me know if I'm micromanaging. But it would be nice if another decision packet comes up, we could point to it and say, well, yeah, we, we discussed, and our philosophy or whatever, our policy is to fund all assistant coaches, and we haven't. Or, you know, they're supported by a booster club and they're not, so what do we do? Just throwing it out there. Because am I just making this conversation up?
No, no, no.
Not at all. As a matter of fact, there is gonna be, in March, a co-curricular presentation. There has been some, there has been a lot of work trying to ferret out what is covered in the budget, what is raised by boosters, what is, I guess those are the two main, major fundings of sports. And then there's other, you know, like, baked goods sales, or, you know, things like that, that, you know, some teams do to raise maybe the T-shirt they wear to whatever. And that work was done a lot by the co-curricular committee, which Susan Grasso and I were on. She did a lot of the dissemination of the information. I do have that report, which I do have to get out to Adam, but that we, that report was presented to the board a few years ago. The thing, when we were ferreting out that information, we literally had to sit down with Kevin and go line by line item, because everything was in his brain, and nothing was really truly written. And I believe that Shep is now having a hard time discerning all of this information, because, you know, Kevin did it for years and years and years, and the information was not written anywhere.
It can't be person-specific, it has to be like, it can't be person-specific, it has to be understood by everybody.
Right, and I, and, you know, I know that Shep is gonna have hard times trying to... It's, it's gonna be a learning curve for him, probably a good six, eight months, to try and figure out how all of these clubs are being funded, and then, and how the movement of money through all of these small accounts or large accounts. Each club has its own, like, bank account, and he's probably managing sixty of them, if I'm not mistaken. And some are large, some are small. I know, it's...
This might be a better discussion matter for next year, after he's been on the job for a year and has figured out what he knows and what he doesn't know.
But we do have a standing, a co-curricular committee, we just haven't, hasn't been very active, but...
Yeah, but you did some really excellent work.
Yeah, but we, we haven't really done the second charge of the, and I believe it's you and Jean and Jean.
Jean and Jean.
Jean and Jean.
And we just haven't had the time to meet.
So, I mean, I think, I think it would be great to try to get that committee back together, just to refresh what kind of information we'd like Shep to be gathering. I mean, that was part of the problem, was, you know...
Well, the next, the, the piece that Kevin was supposed to be doing at this point was really monitoring the type, the fields, in terms of what games were not being played on fields because of the, you know, condition of the fields, and he was, you know, that was part of the information that Kevin was supposed to be gathering, but that, I don't think that ever got off the ground.
So that was sort of a separate one.
I think he got some information, but I don't think it was very understandable, wasn't really clear, as part of the whole turf discussion.
I think we should definitely ask Shep to revisit that.
Right.
To pick up on that, but, I mean, if, if there's interest, I mean, since we have a standing committee, we could go ahead and try to get, I, I'm kinda with you, Lynn, it would be nice to list, wrap our heads around it, because if this gets ugly, this, this, this next budget cycle, we just don't wanna be quite as blind as we have been in the past as to...
But when, in the past, our audit committees are, you know, when we're audited from an external accounting firm, there have been recommendations, there's all that. It's not helter-skelter that we don't know what accounts are there. We have all that. I think when somebody has been in the job for a long time, it comes second nature. I don't think there's anything missing.
Oh, no, the accounting is fine, the accounting is fine.
But it didn't sound that way, so I just wanna make sure folks know that.
I think part of the challenge, too, was especially with the clubs, to know who, who's really in what clubs, because of, like, a lot of students might sign up at the beginning, but then they're so busy with other things, they don't actually come and participate in the club. Or the kids might join later, and that was, I think, a hard part, is to really find out how many kids really were in the clubs that they actually participated in.
Yeah, and that was, and that's a, the only way, the only ones that you can tell who participates are ones that have rosters, so those are the sports clubs. The other ones are really difficult, because you have to have sign-in sheets, and sometimes they don't, you know, the club doesn't have them, or, you know...
This was more clearly from a, from a fiscal standpoint, of looking at what, what the board is funding, what we're asking boosters to fund, and, and is there equity in, in that?
It relates to that other question that I think we started talking, I know I did, I think, but I think I started talking about it, it's hard to remember now. It seems like so long ago, since last year. But do we have a sort of really clear goals that we use to make our decisions about our budget, so that when we come down to have to say, we're not supporting this, we are supporting this, that we have a really clear rationale for it? And that doesn't, in my opinion, we don't usually have that. We have a little squeeze, and we take a little out of this and a little out of that. But we don't have a system as a board for saying, you know, these are, these are the things that we really support first and foremost, and, and that's how we make our decision. You know, like a decision tree, we don't really have one for this. We kinda, it seems a little random sometimes to me.
Our program council comes up with all that. We don't get things to the board that aren't aligned with our mission. Maybe it could be more clear, but, but I don't know where...
I feel like when we get to the point where we're saying we're cutting things that, or whatever, that we might potentially cut things, that we as a board don't, I all feel, maybe I'm just not catching on to it. I don't see a really good system for it, for, for me personally. I feel like, feel like the decisions are less clear. I think it's partly because the scenarios that are brought back to us when, when we say we need to cut the budget by this much, Adam, then the scenarios that are brought back to us, there are eight million possible scenarios, and we see a couple. And, but, and it would be helpful sometimes to have a better sense of which of the possibilities are the, are the best, and are gonna do the best for our learning community, and maybe we sort of do that, but...
You know, we sort of do, when we get to that point, because we usually ask the administration, it would be you, Adam, to recommend priorities, or, of ways we can cut the budget if we need to. And we, and we ask that it's granted in our mission, ambition thing, and it usually is. But we need, we need input about telling us, what do you think? How many kids will this affect, and it's just, this is gonna create more inequities and...
I think we have a better idea of what we wanna add than what we wanna subtract.
Yeah.
Much better.
We like everything we have. We like everything we have. Speaking of, so, so did we decide that we should at least, Jean, revisit?
Yeah, do, well, I guess, do you wanna sit down with Shep, or do you want just the three of us?
I mean, I think, Lynn, if you're interested, I would love your eyes on that, on the data we have, and just kinda get together and have one meeting, and just look at what we already have, and kinda review it, and refresh everyone's, on the committee's mind of, you know, where we're at, and then try to come back to the board, maybe with a, we should do more, or, or we should just charge Shep and come back in a year?
I will say that it's high on Shep's priority list. I sat down with him to talk about his goals, and that was practically number one for the year, so... Just, I think, for his own well-being.
I mean, I looked at those numbers, and I came away from our first meeting all fired up, and then life happened, and we didn't get back together, and, you know, so I, that would be good.
I mean, I think there was some benefit to the way that it was done, you know, when you don't have every line item parsed to the point where you can't, you can't, you know...
Get enough watching them.
Yeah, it's so, it's so rigid that, you know, this, you know, this poor athletic program is at the expense of this one, and so I think Kevin had found some nice ways to negotiate that, and Shep's trying to just find a balance there.
And is Shep looking at the, the equity of the booster clubs?
Yes.
Across everything?
Yes.
Well, and part of the problem with that, Kathy, I'm sorry, is that some of the booster clubs, or some of the fundraising in clubs is going to buy new T-shirts, while other booster clubs are raising because they need, they can't play football without safety equipment. So it's a, so it's a really hard judgment.
The largest booster club is a football club, they raise like... Yeah, I talked to you, you guys pointed at what, there are a lot of...
Because they're expensive sports, really expensive.
I will say that Shep started giving coaches over the summer to get a sense of that, and I think part of it is just around ensuring that we're in good standing with Title IX. So that's, that's an important perspective as well.
I just think as a board, when we said no to the football assistant coaches last year, we had nothing to base it on.
Right.
We just said no. And, and that's, like you said, that, that's an uncomfortable position to be on. It would be nice to be able to point and say, this is kinda...
And I assume volleyball's gonna show up this year, right?
Yeah.
But I also think you need to look at the track program, which, again, they cannot turn anyone away. It's one of the sports where everyone who shows up has to play, it's very large, and there's assistant coaches there that go unpaid. And so I think it's the same with Nordic. So you have these programs where they take everyone who shows up, and are we being insistent on those coaches?
Right. What is our criteria for supporting something? If it's access, increased access, then...
Again, there's, there's a lot of equipment, you know, for the ski teams as well, that comes out of, you know, schools. But it's just, you know, it'd be interesting to see...
I, I think the rationale was used in the past, just, just quickly, having been a cross-country coach with Scott, with a hundred kids, and then having been a head and assistant lacrosse coach, it's typically around decisions around safety. So when you're coaching lacrosse, you, you need to have two or three coaches there, because you have, this, the, the sport specializes in such a way, and there's contact that you, the more adults you have there, the better. With cross-country, it's, it's a little easier to manage those groups.
But track's very specialized as well, so, you know, different people for safety reasons, you need technique for safety.
Lots of good questions, Simone. I had another one here, is, we talked about, you know, we approve all these international trips, and they say they're gonna go out and do all this fundraising. I'd be really interested to know, do they actually do the fundraising?
Well, we are having a presentation, and remember, isn't there an international trip committee that's formed that they will be presenting?
They are preparing, not as we speak, but we're, Catherine and I were talking about it about two days ago, so...
So that, so that, I assume is also around this whole question of, we would really like to be able to provide every student an opportunity to travel in some way, right? So I assume that's what they're really primarily planning to address. And that comes back to another budget issue, right? Do we, wouldn't we like to have more of a fun? I know you do.
Also with those international trips, are we gonna, are they gonna include like domestic trips, too? Because, as Jean just said, every, you want everyone...
The trip to California hiking in the mountains, yeah.
We can just be canoeing Lake Champlain for three days. You know, it doesn't have to be...
And that's the thing, it doesn't have to be.
Yeah.
It's about access.
When they're based on curriculum, our trips are not, you know, tourist kind of things. It's certainly integrated in that, but, but, yeah, I mean, environmental, looking at the health of the lake, but, but I think this conversation's, let, let's see what is from within our administration coming, because we're really talking, I think, micro.
Are there any more comments, Jean, that you have for the work plan?
Only just to mention that the budget, the things on the budget row here aren't, they don't match the budget calendar, the budget calendar is the source document, I think. Sandy and Bob know a lot of things, you know, they have things like the FMR, special ed, the things that we don't do. So, just refer to, refer to the budget calendar.
Okay, are we now ready to approve the Board Work Plan?
Yeah, come prepared, what can I say?
So how are we adding security, just as a, it's gonna be a report?
Yeah, I'm gonna bring, I'll bring a relatively quick report about, I think, topics to consider, consider under the realm of security, and it, I don't think it would be too much hassle for me to put together a quick Google survey and just get a pulse on some various topics from, I think, faculty and students, that could be done easily.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the Board Work Plan, say aye. Anyone opposed, abstaining, the ayes have it. We have approved our Board Work Plan for the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen school year. Let's move on to seven point two, do I have a motion to, to approve the budget assumptions proposed on page sixty-one?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Where'd these page numbers come from? Because I don't know.
I see them in my bag.
I thought it was because I was a new guy, I was having trouble finding them.
No, it's seven point two, it's right here.
They only do it as like the seven point two, they don't actually number the pages.
But if you're looking online, which we're all supposed to be doing.
I do that, too.
Same paper.
Was there any discussion at the CSSU meeting about these? Were there any changes or questions that...
The discussion at the CSSU meeting really was that we now have a CSSU budget committee, because the CSSU budget is getting large and complex, and where it's just hard to have deep conversations about some of the transportation puts and takes and everything without, with seventeen people at the table. So, so there is a budget committee, we did review these baseline budgets, there were, we certainly had questions that we asked Bob to come back on, but rather than hold the whole process, the, the committee recommended and the board approved, just going forward with these. So that's not to say that any individual board can't change them, it just won't be in the baseline.
Any more discussion on the baseline? Any more discussion on the baseline budget?
I had a question on item nine for school choice under discussion.
My guess is, is how many kids we would let in here by school choice?
Or out?
Or out.
I was just curious what that meant and who was the stuff?
This right here. School choice.
In discussion.
Yeah. I think we capped it at, how many did we cap at?
Ten for grade or something?
I don't know.
Did, what do we cap our school choice?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I could look into it.
Good question, we'll find out.
Yeah, I was just curious what that meant. Um, the next item was the audit fees per contract. Who's it contracted with? Is it a multi-year, a flat rate?
It's with CSSU.
It's a CSSU contract? Right. And then the last item I had was around item nineteen. Reduction in stipends for spelling bees.
What did you say, item nineteen?
Yeah, yeah.
That's at.
Yeah, that's Shelburne and Charlotte.
I can tell you what the, what that is, this is a situation where during a budget discussion, we may be having a heated discussion about something in particular, and we might say, look, or, it shouldn't be heated, it could be, but this is really set up to be is, is there a one-time cost that the board does not wanna see in next year's baseline? So say, Adam said we need a hundred thousand dollars in IT in order to give everybody a laptop. That's like a one-time thing, it wouldn't be a hundred thousand dollars. So we would, so Bob does a good job of tracking one-time events here, so that when he puts the baseline together next year, he doesn't include it in the baseline.
All right, so these are just one-time unique.
Right.
The other situation may be something that was controversial, and the board says, look, we're gonna approve it this time, but we're gonna have this discussion in another year. You know, I'll let it go this time.
So don't assume it's.
Don't assume it's, don't assume it's in your baseline next year, so that's, that's the kind of thing, but we didn't have any last year. Just while we're on this conversation, we didn't, we talked about Act forty-six, we didn't talk about the cost containment part of that, and that's, that the state legislature put in a, like, sort of a sliding scale, depending on your cost per pupil, how much you're allowed to spend. And statewide, it goes from, can't be zero, some really low number up to five and a half percent, and, and CBU is, number is two point four three percent. So that's sort of the, that's what our cost per pupil can go up.
What did we go up last year? Cost per pupil?
Actually, last year we had some big benefit, which I'm struggling to remember what it was. We had a pretty easy budget year last year. Might have been special. This, I would say that if this was a budget, it would be hard enough, but you just saw the numbers that we lost seventy kids. So cost per pupil, it could be difficult this year. And the only thing we have in our favor is the fund balance, healthy fund balance, but it's, just keep that, keep that number in your head. And that's the highest out of all the schools, by the way, all the K eights are, got lower numbers, so.
Well, the K eights have a lower percentage?
Charlotte's one point five. Glad you're not on that board, aren't you?
I was on the board when we cut four percent.
I was gonna say. Negative.
You'd be happy to have one point five.
Any more discussion on the budget assumptions?
Late to the party, did you change anything?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the budget assumptions, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, abstaining? The ayes have it, we've approved our budget assumptions. The next thing we're going on to is seven point three. Do I have a motion to approve the budget calendar?
Same with you.
Second. Discussion.
It's gonna be a tight, tight calendar.
Yeah.
Like our first meeting, budget meeting is until December. Get it done.
Yep. Okay, if there are no, there's no discussion, do I have a, a vote for approving the budget calendar? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? The ayes have it, we've approved our budget calendar. And now I have item seven point four. Do I have a motion to approve the appointment of one member to the healthcare committee?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Do we have anybody?
I sent out Cindy's information that she had sent to me and the other board chairs about what it means to be on this committee. Anyone interested?
Can you review it for me? How many meetings, like, I mean, how, how long, what do you think of this? I'm supposed to become educated according to healthcare, which is actually a good idea.
Yes, can you handle this one? This is right up your alley.
The first committee, the first commitment will be to attend the BEHI VisFit informational session on first Wednesday, I forget what the date is, or Thursday. Yeah, thank you, the October eighth, at the, wherever Trader Dukes is, because I can never remember the name of the hotel, because they change it all the time. And from there, we'll get the committee together, kinda debrief the meeting and figure out what we need to learn to move forward with the conversation. The committee is composed of reps from all the boards and hopefully one employee representative from all our different employee groups, so that we can all be ready for whatever's coming.
So I could probably do that, except I will be working in the urgent care during that meeting, so I can't make that meeting, and I don't know if someone can pull my shift for me.
I bet we can get you up to date if we needed to.
And I work in healthcare, but I don't know how it works.
There are.
So there's a big difference there.
There are other sessions around this stage, but obviously that one's the most.
I have no idea how computers work either, and I made a career in IT.
Okay, so I'll.
So Kim, your interest, thank you so much. Okay.
One or two?
Do I have a? Are we ready to vote to appoint Kim to be our representative from the CBU board to the healthcare committee? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, abstaining? The ayes have it. Kim, you are now our healthcare committee person.
Fine campaign there, Kim.
We are moving on to the consent agenda, and before I, because we do not have a discussion on this, we just approve it, I just wanna make sure people know what I did over the summer, when, as a.
Sounds like an essay.
What I did over the summer, to, at the end of our business meeting in June, you gave me the.
Authority.
Authority, thank you, to approve things that would normally have come before the board. Does any, if, if you have any questions about that, we'll answer them now before we approve the consent agenda. I bought a boiler.
Did you get any new buses?
I bought a lot of computers. And I think I had approved a, a person for Spanish, I think, yes. And then I have, I do have one other thing, I do not know what this approved business bank account authorization for new administration, is that like we give you the authorization?
We just put his name on the checking account.
Yeah, the name on the checking account, okay.
Which, I'm questionable, but, you know.
Construction fund account?
The construction. That's the boiler.
That was the boiler?
That was the boiler. And.
No, I don't think so.
Yes, it is, that is the boiler.
That was summer actions is eight four.
Yeah, but it also matches the amount in eight, in eight point four.
Yeah. The other thing is, is I think if you people wanna really, I think it was a little over sixty thousand dollars for all the computers that the fresh, incoming freshmen are getting. Something like that. They were a hundred and ninety-three dollars apiece.
Well, in general, the board has to approve any purchase over fifteen thousand dollars, and this wasn't on our list of fund projects, so that's.
We actually knew that they were gonna be buying the computers for the students, where they just didn't get their act together to get us that, be at our business meeting, they didn't have the, the bid ready and all that kinda stuff, the approval of the bid. But we did approve them in our budget.
Mm-hmm.
Cindy had some.
Yes.
Now, I was, the bids actually at CSSU and then the schools, then I might can't remember how many they wanted.
Okay, um, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Same with.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Nine point zero, I am just confirming our next CBU meeting, board meeting, it is gonna be at seven o'clock on October twentieth, right here. And we have no executive session, do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Same with.
Excellent.